Did you look at the photo and see where everybody's at there, Luke?
I work well.
Photo.
What about? Where's that?
Well, we're at the uh. What are you trying to say? Me and you are next to each other.
Oh, that's what you meant. I think you meant like the. I think you meant the location of the photo on the apple. I don't know. How could that be?
I don't know how they got it, but they must have done it.
I saw, I saw it like I said, last week or something. I was just like, that's not fair.
If you have access to that data, can we get the data too?
Well, I think you got the email.
No, no.
The signed data?
No, I never got it.
I got it last time. I don't think I got it this time.
Oh.
Well, I didn't get it. I only got one.
I just uh.
I got it like eighteen to March here. Was it like a month ago? Yeah. What's that?
Oh, it was a month ago?
Yeah.
I don't think I missed it.
I just did check my emails.
I do.
Was there one? Yeah.
March eighteenth nineteen. No, I. All sign information.
That was last week Friday.
Oh, yeah, it was. Wow. Ooh, time was flying by.
No, I don't.
Jeez, I thought it was sixteen thirty.
Okay. I got it. My God. It's marked as red. Oh, I looked at this. I was just thinking it was different data. Yeah, I remember looking at this. Yeah, average speeds, everything.
All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council to order if we can all arise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let the league just take the play of the United States of America and two public with a fan, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, we have all council members present. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none. We'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda unless we have any changes.
Mayor and Council, there are no changes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to proclamations. We won. Let's see, let me open this up here. So our Public Works received the recognition from MPCA for operational excellence. Uh, I'm not going to read the whole thing this year, but uh, basically the, to sum it up, we have uh. Uh, well, here, let me just read the last paragraph. I think is a good summary kind of of what this award recognizes. Uh, the MPCA recognizes outstanding water operations each year. Approximately sixteen hundred municipal and industrial wastewater treatment facilities operate across Minnesota. The MPCA reviewed a total of seven hundred and sixty-seven facilities from communities of all sizes with two hundred and fifty-three qualifying for the outstanding Operations Recognition Award. So uh, so they're in, in good company there with uh, what is that, about a third of?
Six, fifteen percent.
Hmm, out of seven hundred and sixty-seven that they.
Oh.
Yeah, so out of the ones that they were doing, I mean, that's uh, that's really a good performance, so. Um, so yeah, like to, like to see that and, and congratulations to our team there, so. All right, moving on to the city council meeting minutes. We have our minutes from the April second twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we have our Park and Recreation Board meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-third at six P M. We have our city council meeting Tuesday, May seventh at seven P M. Uh, we have our E D A meeting on May seventh as well, and that will immediately follow the council meeting. Are there any council committee reports?
I guess I'll just update you on the, I went to the BMX Association meeting. Uh, it's kind of the business as usual. They got a big race coming up in June and they're estimating the biggest crowd that they've ever had, so. Um, it might be a little busy that weekend, so um, but that's about it.
I never did hear anything as far as that parking situation.
Yeah, me neither, but.
Did you hear it?
No, if we could hold off Unity Park.
Yeah. Uh, that, that was something that maybe I could just kind of bring it up and just so you guys are kind of aware of it, I guess, but. Um, we had talked with uh, uh, well. I don't know if I should even bring it up, I guess, right at the moment because it's probably not an issue, but let me, let me just, I'll, I'll, we'll talk about it when it becomes an issue if it, if it does, but.
Are there food trucks there for that or do they have in, in food inside?
They, they, as an association, they sell us everything inside.
Okay, got it.
You know, for them away to make money.
Okay.
All right, any other council committee reports?
I'm signed up for the uh, Rochester training session, League of Minnesota, so that'll be good, I hope. I'm excited for that, so. Other than that, uh, school board and uh, Chamber of Commerce meet this week, so.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Well, how, here, maybe I could just bring this up, I guess, is, so if, if Run River BMX needed space to camp and to park vehicles and stuff like that, would you guys be, for their participants in that, would you guys be open to allowing that for, in Unity Park?
Do you know where Unity Park is?
Nope.
Right next to the rodeo grounds.
Yeah.
With the baseball field?
Oh, okay. Yeah, why not? I mean, the rodeo.
The whole grass area.
The rodeo uses it.
Next to the rodeo grounds there?
Not saying, and I'm, and I'm not saying that they need that, and that's not actually what they would be even asking, but I'm just, okay, I'm just.
I'd be open to it.
I just wanted to kind of feel you guys out a little bit on that, so.
Yeah, because they're, they're projecting huge crowds and with the rodeo, if you get a large crowd and you don't have enough parking and places to put people, they self-park. And then they start closing down roads and narrowing roads. You don't want that. You need to get people off the road so you have emergency vehicle traffic that can go through and then all the traffic on the road can flow nice. So I was just thinking, um, maybe, and they haven't asked any for this at all, but I'm just thinking as a city, that area is going to be busy that, that week in June, weekend in June.
I'd be open to it.
Or what about the compo site or Public Works or any of that stuff that's closer? I guess, I don't know.
I don't know.
Do you want them on comp, in the Public Works or the compo site?
Yeah.
You don't want them there.
Yeah, like, they're not asking for that. That's not even actually what they want. I just, I just am trying to kind of, at least make you aware that there may be some interest in somebody using uh, Unity Park there, so. Um, all right, any other council committee reports? Otherwise, we'll move on to business item K one, the Isani Area Joint Fire District Annual Report Presentation.
Test, test, is this on?
We just lost power here a little bit ago. We had, actually had to get them back on.
Blink the grass down, I think. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Al Jankovic, Fire Chief, for those who don't know who I am. Uh, twenty twenty-three annual report. We made a report and we presented it to all of our owners, uh, six townships and the city of Isani now tonight. Uh, just kind of an overview of what we did in twenty twenty-three. Uh, so you, I don't know if you have the paper ones. I have uh, several of them on the desk and we have it on the screen. If uh, we just look at it together here. I will uh, discuss the pages, probably not in much depth, but if you have any questions along the way, feel free to, to ask as they come up. Uh, so the first page is a list of our active firefighters as of December thirty-first. Uh, so you'll see the years of service there behind their name. Those are how many complete years of service they have. So if they actually have four years, eleven and a half months on, they're listed as having four years. You total them all up. Two hundred and twenty-one years and the average between all of those twenty, I believe, eight or nine firefighters is eight years. The next page, run volumes. Uh, we responded to five hundred and thirty-six total runs in two thousand twenty-three. You'll see the city of Isani uh, logged two hundred and thirty-two of those total five hundred and thirty-six runs. Comparing that on a ten-year uh, fire call volume history is the bottom graph. You'll see the, the line steadily goes up, except for last year, we realized a fifty-seven percent decrease from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. As you uh, know, that is because of our new protocol and call response that we are limiting our call response to minor medicalism. Trying to reduce the amount of uh, minor call responses, duplicating efforts, et cetera. The next pages, three, four, pages three and four, that is a call summary or call type summary, which lists all of the runs we went on, all five hundred and thirty-six of them, and it separates them by call type so that you can see uh, in two thousand twenty-three, for example, we went on fifty-four different types of fires, which uh, equates to ten point one percent of our total call volume, so. Uh, two hundred and eighty-five EMS calls, which totaled fifty-three point two percent of our total run types in two thousand twenty-three. The next page, page six, will be a list of the training that the firefighters attended in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the top one, we're kind of proud of firefighter fitness events. Realizing that a lot of firefighter injuries are due to our own fitness. We've decided to uh, make an effort to ramp it up at the fire station and before most of our meetings and trainings, uh, we have a fitness routine. A lot of times, it's a simple jog, just something to get our heart rate up, but it makes us all conscious of our fitness and hopefully uh, gets people in the habit of uh, realizing that our fitness is important, not only personally, but as a part of being a healthy firefighter on the fire department. This list of classes also uh, checks the box for our OSHA mandated uh, requirements annually. Uh, it also checks the box for our mandatory Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education classes so that we follow compliance with our continuing education. Uh, those of us who have a license uh, to be a firefighter, it makes sure that we are complying with regulatory rules in place for those different sections. The next page, page six, is our service area. It's adjusted per our uh, twenty twenty-two county auditor's report. It shows the different sections in each township that we service, the estimated population uh, and the associated valuation for those selected sections. So you see on the bottom there, if you add them all up, we cover one hundred and fifty-seven square miles. Within that hundred and fifty-seven square miles, there's six thousand three hundred and seven households. And if you add up the valuation of all the houses, the businesses, the land, the property, uh, combined, we cover or we protect uh, over two billion five hundred and eighty-seven million dollars worth of valuation. The graphic on the bottom, the yellow line uh, is our, our response area boundary, our primary response area boundary, so the uh, land that is inside of the yellow box is currently our primary response area. Page seven is a summary of our financials. Uh, as of December thirty-first, you'll see there, their twenty twenty-three budget was seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and, oops, sorry, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand forty-eight dollars. Our entire uh, fire district budget for twenty twenty-three. Grant income, we had a couple of grants there, one from the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education. And we also uh, finished up a grant from two thousand twenty-two where we had five thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty-six cents reimbursed to us uh, as part of an A F G uh, grant, which was for P P E, Personal Protective Equipment as a result of the COVID pandemic. Donation income, you see a list there of some different random donations that the fire district received totaling thirteen thousand two hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents. Uh, briefly going down the, the row there, you'll see a, a list of bank interest income, some dividend returns. The Firefighters Rodeo Association donated five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and forty-three cents in goods. You'll see a total income of eight hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and eleven cents for the year. That is deposited uh, in the different bank accounts. You'll see at the bottom there what we haven't uh, expensed in two thousand twenty-three, I should say. We have a, a regular checking account at Flagship Bank. We have a capital equipment savings account for our larger capital purchases, a fire call savings account, and then we have a separate account for uh, water rescue equipment. The uh, the pictures there, when I made this report, we hadn't seen much snow this year, so I came across that snowy uh, ranger rescue pickup there. I thought I'd throw that in there for fun. But the bottom picture, I spent some time and looked at that tonight before I got here, and I'm pretty impressed with that picture, actually. If you look at that, that's a training burn, is what that is. We, we burnt a house for training out in Oxford Township this year. And I'm pretty impressed with how organized the guys have got that set up, from our hose being pulled back to we have a standby ambulance there. The, the deck guns up on the engine, ready to go if something were to get out of hand. The drop tank is full, so kudos to uh, the firefighters on scene there who worked and set that up so nicely. The next page, page eight is our capital assets, pretty simple list of all the equipment that we own. The buildings, Station Two and Station Three that we own, everything there is debt-free, except for Station One, which you all know well about. The next page, nine and ten, actually, the next two pages are the two hundred and thirty-two runs that we responded to in Isani, broke down by run types. So if you wanted to see how many fires we responded to in your city last year, there was thirteen, which equates to five point six percent of our overall run types in the city of Isani. Hundred and twenty-three of our two hundred and thirty-two runs are medical, so just over half of our runs in the city are something EMS-related. The bottom picture on uh, ten there is Amber, our, our, I guess, fire dog. It's not the fire district's dog, but we kind of consider part of our family and she's actually at your liquor store at an event that they hosted or allowed us to host at the liquor store, kind of a touch of truck event after their fundraising uh, event to, to close that out, uh, where we set up our trucks. Uh, we tried to hand out some applications for the fire department and we we showed off our, our trucks there for a night, a Friday night. The last page is this year. It's a quick rundown of our financials for twenty twenty-four in the city of Isani. So you'll see there, our overall budget for the entire fire district in twenty twenty-four is seven hundred ninety thousand and seven hundred and twenty dollars. The city of Isani uh, is scheduled to contribute three hundred and seven thousand five hundred and two dollars and twenty cents of that budget through our formula. Uh, quarterly, you will pay seventy-six thousand dollar, seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, and then if you work out the percentages, do the math, uh, you will pay for thirty-nine percent of our entire budget and last year's call volumes equated to forty-six percent of our runs. The bottom picture there, you'll see it was a, a structure fire that somebody grabbed a picture of that we were at in June out in the township. That concludes my annual report.
I have a question for you, if that's okay. Um, so when, when you guys had dropped the non-emergency medical calls, uh, what did you call those?
Critical calls?
Critical calls. Have you had any complaints?
I should back up.
Yeah.
We didn't drop critical calls.
Or, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're focusing on criticals and we're not responding to minor medicals.
Yes, minor medicals. Have you had any complaints from residents about that or has there been any real roadblocks or big issues with that?
Uh, there have been, there has been pushback. There, I can't think of a resident or a patient.
Okay.
That has uh, been showing concern or had pushed back.
Okay, I know there's pushback from some people in the fire, but not residence-wise is what I'm.
And you know as well as anybody, when you have change.
Yeah.
Somebody somewhere is going to not approve.
Yes, I just want to make sure that residents weren't feeling like it was a, a bad move on our part and I didn't know if you'd heard any complaints.
You know, I can think of more times when residents have appreciated it, honestly.
Okay.
And I don't mean to disregard people's EMS calls.
Mm-hmm.
But it is a shock when you have a minor medical and we can all think of what those could be.
Yep.
And you have a crew of firefighters show up.
Yep.
And it could be one truck with one guy. It could be two trucks with ten guys.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's overwhelming and uh, brings a lot of anxiety uh, to, to a lot of people there, so. I think we did a good job of identifying uh, the need to draw that back, not only the cost and the liability and the wear and tear, but you look at our, our graph on run counts and it's going up and up and up.
Mm-hmm.
And the only way to overcome that is with money, by hiring more people. And that's not gonna uh, outweigh the more common sense approach of recognizing we're overstaffing some of these calls. We are. I'm not saying other agencies, other towns, other departments don't have a need for fire to respond as a first responder to minor medicals, but in our area, the way we're set up with our ambulance, ambulances, I should say, across our fire district, this seems to be working very well.
Good. I'm happy to see the numbers down that much. That's a big deal. Yep.
Yes, thank you for recognizing that.
Yep.
I have a question.
I, oh, go ahead, George.
Um, the map with the yellow line.
Yeah.
That, is that just the area service because I, okay, Spencer Brook, for instance, only half of the township is in it. Do you serve the whole township and what's the meaning of that yellow line?
The townships are responsible for negotiating their own fire contracts. So they, they determine via whatever uh, factors they deem necessary to hire a fire department to protect their sections the best that they can. Some use cost, some use distance, some use I S O rating. Depending on what each township uses as uh, like a pecking order, what's more important to them, they will negotiate contracts with neighboring fire departments. And Spencer Brook has negotiated with Princeton for the remaining sections.
Okay, and so that's the same with Isani Township also, it looks like, part of it?
That's correct. They also have a contract with Cambridge Fire.
I did not know that. So it, when you, when you're figuring out the cost of the township's property value that, that you represent, that, how, that must be really difficult to be breaking.
That's a great question. That's, and, and it's really not that difficult uh, because of that formula that we have in place and the nice people at Isani County that give us a report that says how much valuation is in each exact section within their township. And they can even break it up. There's some sections in Isani Township, for example, that says P T of section four. That's part of section four. So we, we actually service part of section four and Cambridge services the other part of section four, just because of how that section lands around the lake. So the assessor's office is able to pick which properties are in each section and they just put them on a, on a spreadsheet. And when that spreadsheet has all the sections on it, they total it and there's our valuation. So that's how we use uh, valuation in our formula to calculate how much obligation that township has out of our budget. We also track our run history in every single township, every section, every address. So we're able to run a report on every square mile of area in our coverage area. So that's another factor we use in our formula to determine how much everybody's going to pay towards our budget is how many runs we've responded to historically in those different sections. Does that make sense? So we use their, their call volume history, their valuation, we compare it to everybody else and we then calculate out that percentage of our budget that they'll be responsible for.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Good question.
I, I was just going to mention, Luke had asked that question about, and you had said that, you know, you think the residents appreciate it, actually, and and I've, I've seen it firsthand too. I mean, it's, most people or a lot of people don't know that the fire department or the police department is actually going to show up on those calls. They think just, they just think they're waiting for the ambulance, so I've seen it before where you go to a call and they're not happy to see you because, because they didn't think you were coming, so. Uh, so I definitely, I, I think it's, it's a good thing, for sure, what we're doing. Any other questions for Al? All right. Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, moving on to K two, resolution to consider approving a special event permit for the neighborhood market.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight we have a special event per, permit um, to consider for the neighborhood market. The event will be held on Fridays in the Members Credit Union parking lot from May third through October eighteenth in two thousand twenty-four. Each of the um, events will run from two to six P M. Parking will be in the lot with overflow parking approved by Coburn's. On-site restrooms will be used and there is an estimated three hundred and fifty people per day in attendance for the event. Um, the applicant is requesting the cleanup deposit and temporary sign permit fees to be waived. Um, and staff has given approval with comments. Chief Myers gives his approval with the condition that there is an emergency vehicle, vehicle egress within a hundred and fifty feet of all buildings and with a twenty-foot width minimum and thirteen foot, six inch height minimum for fire. Um, temporary signs will still require city approval as directed by the city zoning ordinance and mobile food units are permitted as vendors. And the applicant, applicant will remain and up, will maintain an updated list of vendors throughout the event. Mobile food units added to the vendor list throughout the event do not require mobile food license as discussed earlier with the city if covered by the organizers' insurance coverage, which she did confirm, so.
I just came up here to thank you guys for all your help and thank Jaden especially for being so easy to work with. That's all. We've had a really successful season and so I'm gonna let you do it then.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. I guess I should give you guys a, a chance to oppose it, but. Um, all right, moving on to K three, resolution to consider approving a special event permit for October fifth Amp It Up.
This event is um, for the October fifth, twenty twenty-four Amp It Up. Um, it will be held from six P M to eleven P M for a one-day event held at the Bluebird Park Amphitheater with the performers utilizing, um, the amphitheater, it says. Um, this event is regularly scheduled, is the regularly scheduled Amp It Up, but um, it is hosted by the city, but will include a partnership with the Happy Trucker Show um, who will be DJing, emceeing um, the event and um, will host Model and the Joe Stan Band. And uh, they will be, Happy Productions will also be coordinating the music for the event, so we're getting um, the performers through the Happy Trucker Show. And that's where the partnership comes in, along with, um, they'll be promoting it on their show as well. Parking will be in the lots at Bluebird Park with the approval from Run River BMX to utilize Isani indoor arena lot as overflow parking. Um, and we've also requested this from the Soccer Complex parking lot if needed, and we're still waiting a response. Food trucks and vendors will be available at the event, including the, with the Lions, with their regular draft beer and Thunder Brothers Brewery who we met with. Um, they usually just provide two beers, but they will be providing up to four beers for this evening, including one traditionally served at Oktoberfest events. There will be ten added portable restrooms for a total of twelve onsite with. There will be ten added portable restrooms for a total of twelve onsite with two already in the park. And there will be up to three small wood fire pits onsite for use during the event. An estimated two to three thousand people are expected to be in attendance.
So this was kind of like the Oktoberfest event that we've been talking about and so I think uh that, how did we end up, the Happy Trucker, I kinda just mentioned just call the guy and see if he's got, because we were kinda looking for a little different style of
We talked to him.
Music and stuff.
I talked to him at a Chamber of Commerce meeting and then I directed him Stephanie's way.
Okay.
Cause he was looking to get involved and he loves that amphitheater, he's like a kid in a candy store with that thing, so he's super excited about it.
Well, and that's what, they had, they were looking for a band that would fit sort of that ambiance of the Oktoberfest sort of that we were going for and and I told him to call that, call him and, and I don't, I don't even know what his name is, but Sean, okay. Uh, but so I think he would, he probably will draw a lot of people to the event, I know he's got quite a following too, so. Um, I guess I'd like to see more, more beer vendors maybe too, if we can get them and I don't know how that, how that's gone or if we've gone to more or tried to get more or if we wanted to just keep it more local or what do you?
We really did discuss this with Thunder Brothers since they're a local brewery and they we don't, also don't wanna step on their toes or the Lions. Um, and having too many vendors sometimes takes away from their ability.
Think so?
And Thunder Brothers, I think that's.
Yeah.
That's why they did decide to provide up to four beers, yeah.
Okay.
Are you trying to get like more of an October feel to it or October?
Well, I mean, I just kinda thought if we can turn it into sort of a, I mean, if we're gonna do it, I guess, I mean, more of a festival, I guess, sort of where you've got, you know, maybe you have ten different beer vendors and.
Maybe you could be more selective about the food, I don't know, or.
Well, this was meant to be also, if I could interrupt just, a mini version of an Oktoberfest, not the Oktoberfest, because we didn't have staff time
Yeah.
and resources this year, so um hopefully this'll go well and it's just kind of a soft launch into that and then we can make it an actual event event next year in the style that was hopeful.
Okay, I mean, I think it is, it is still is the, the same style, I think, of what we're doing, but yeah, I mean, I.
Well, and you got a lot of uh wineries and, and uh more hard liquor uh.
Yeah, that'll be interesting too.
That distill their own stuff, so if you could incorporate some of them and I think there's two wineries just outside the city limits and then just over by Cambridge, I can think of off the top of my head.
Sandy Distillery or something like that?
Something like that.
We did discuss about I- Sandy Spirits, they would be allowed um to apply to be, to be in a, a vendor at the event. Um, so we will reach out to them as well.
I think winery would be a good idea too.
And we do have a relationship with Red Pine Winery, so.
Okay.
There's a winery off of ninety-five between Norbanch and Cambridge.
She's been in here, she was one in when we were having discussion on the marijuana laws. I make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Alright, I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Alright, moving on to K four, resolution to consider approving the development agreement for Johnson's Meadows Phase One.
This is the resolution to consider um the D A for Johnson's Meadows Phase One. The preliminary P U D and the final plat for Phase One were approved at the March nineteenth city council meeting. Uh, as city in, city-owned infrastructure is being constructed as part of the development, a development agreement is required. Um, the agreement follows a standard city form with the following additions. In section twenty D of the agreement, it states issuance of building permits shall be allowed prior to the erection of all street signs by the developer as determined by the city and curb and gutter and the botuminous base course placement for the following parcels legally described as lot seven block two, lot eight block two, lot one block three, and lot two block three. However, a temporary or final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until all requirements outlined in section twenty-one dot E R met, including but not limited to all landscaping and driveway requirements and/or the escrows for these items have been paid. Basically, uh Mr. Strandlin is requesting that he can start construction on the first four homes um on the street that um intersects with Eighth Avenue, so it's the first four lots. So he would like to start constructions, but no C O's or anything would be allowed until everything is complete. And that's something similar that we did for Fairway Greens North.
And he was okay with that?
That's what he requested.
He's requesting the same, the procedures until everything, okay.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve. It's all this discussion we had.
Yeah, it's all the same discussion that we had at the, the planning meeting, but.
I'll second.
Uh, so I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries three two. Uh, moving on to K five, K five, resolution to consider approving part, man, let's try that again. K five, resolution to consider approving park maintenance items for safety purposes.
It's me again. This is a resolution to consider approving part ma, park maintenance items for safety purposes. Uh, we are really requesting action to be taken to repair park equipment due to safety concerns throughout the parks. Uh, the Park and Recreation twenty twen, twenty-four allocated budget for repairs and maintenance machinery and equipment is nine thousand five hundred dollars. In September of twenty twenty-three, a clack, a crack, sorry, and the tall green spiral slide on the large equipment at Bluebird Park was found. Um, and staff ordered a replacement slide in February of twenty twenty-four, that's the timeline it takes for us to figure out what replacement parts are available. We weren't able to um get the exact same slide because our equipment is over twenty years old now and so they don't make the same pieces, so we have to figure out what can go there and it's our biggest slide in the city, actually. So um we were able to find a slide and it's estimated to arrive at the end of April to early May and the cost for that replacement was seven thousand four hundred and two dollars.
I have a question on that one, that one to me seems a bit crazy, um, so when you say there was a crack, that wasn't something that could be repaired, repaired by a fiberglass person?
It was not a crack, it was like a hammer hole through the slide, like multiple holes through the slide.
You know what that was from?
Um, just age wear, the, in that park specifically, the sun directly shines on all of the equipment. It's twenty years old, which is exceeds the life of the equipment by about five years, I believe. And so the expanding into contraction
Yeah.
of that heat, hot and cold just really takes a beating on those slides and that one's directly south facing, so.
Okay.
Um, in February, parts to repair the dock and bridge, or dock, bridge at River Bluff Preserve were ordered and that cost was three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. After those expenditures for repairs, remaining budget for twenty twenty-four is one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and nineteen cents. Upon staff completing park inspections, which are done regularly, um and being notified of damaged equipment, there are additional items in parks that will be needed repairing due to safety concerns that will exceed the allocated budget for twenty twenty-four. Um, so we'll start with Bluebird Park. The skate park is in need of maintenance on all of the structures. Um, we did have Public Works do a pretty um intense overview of the park just to see exactly what all needed to be repaired because if, we don't wanna just put a Band-Aid on it if we're gonna be repairing it right away and since that infrastructure has been there. It, that's passed its useful life as well by a few years. Um, the middle section, if we just repaired that part, which is the part that is really unsafe and is in dire need of repair, um, it would cost seven thousand. If we looked at all of the skate park structures just to see what is gonna need repairing, probably within the next six months, two years so that we're not back here again where kids can't use those sections of the skate park. Um, it's fifteen thousand total for, including that seven thousand, so fifteen thousand total to make all repairs.
I have heard a, a couple of pretty loud voices on the condition of that whole skate park as well, so. Um, I don't know if anybody's reached out to you, but someone asked about potentially doing fundraising to pay for some of that. I don't know if they ever actually reached out to anybody here.
I have not been contacted.
Okay.
Julia, from my knowledge.
Well, I know that's a, that's a concern and could be a da, a dangerous one there.
Can, can any of this be taken out of the park dedication funds?
That's.
Not for repair and maintenance, that's.
What if we get it?
Move it to the other end, if it goes in a completely different area, can it be used? Because that skate park really needs to be completely redone and it's one of the most used parks, I believe, that we have in the city.
So it was up for C I P this year, so the amount was twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine, fifty-one dollars that was budgeted for the re, for the repair of what is there, so the maintenance of that. Um, staff does, has discussed other options for adding to the skate park as well, so concrete skate park and using that additional stuff as a potential park dedication fund possibility. Um, so we are trying to figure out what that would cost and that is, if we get the direction from council after looking at all this stuff um, tonight, that would be what we would like to just consider looking forward and doing. Um, just getting the pricing and stuff, not moving forward, but getting the pricing and um having that, that be a part of it. But this stuff that we have here, if you would like to repair it, it'd be more of the smaller scale skate park so we could have a section for younger kids and make a newer section for older kids, so.
I still think there has to be a way around the park reserve fund terminology because it's such a gray area, it's like, well, it has to be a new piece of equipment, well, it is new if you're replacing something that's broken. So, or if you change anything about it, if you, if you add an inch to the lip of a thing, it's technically a different piece of equipment. So who's to, who's to say we can't use a park reserve fund for something like that, who's gonna call us out on it?
The auditors, from my understanding.
I do think, mayor and council, that if we were to um make repairs and which is the structural underlayment, the, the top part of the current skate park, that's maintenance repair. If we were to place a new co, a park, um skate park equipment right next to it that is new, maybe it's concrete, maybe it's still metal, maybe it's same material, but it's a new set next to it, then you could use park dedication for that, that's something new added to that park.
So we could potentially, we could potentially add on next to it and then just remove the other stuff. It, that's a replacement, I mean, it's, it's so many gray areas you can never get called out on it.
That slide that's being replaced in Bluebird Park.
It's different.
It's different.
Right.
So that's a replacement.
It's a replacement, replacement is not permitted, use of those funds.
But it's different.
It's a new slide. But it's not the same slide, because if you could get the same slide, you could get the same parts. Okay, so it's not the same. It's, it's not, it's not a replacement, it's, it's a new slide.
Why don't we, why don't we, I don't know, have we put a request into our city attorney to, to look at that language and see if there's a?
We've been getting snookered by this for years and I still think.
Cause I agree with Steve, it, it's not the same, it's, it's, it, it is new. How do you, what do you say, I mean, it's a replacement, but it's also new, so it, it satisfies both ends of that language, so. I guess I'd like to know what, what maybe Joe thinks on that question and.
Or if we move the slide over five feet, is it, seriously, it was, does that change the whole dynamic?
It's such a great, it's so great.
They leave that, they, they're leaving that language vague on purpose.
It's not, it's a complete different thing. I mean, that's, that's, put it in an easy term. So you go to Menards and you look at a faucet and it's a Delta faucet, X Y Z. You go to Lowe's, Lowe's compares prices. It's the same model of faucet, but the part number is different. They do not have to match the price because it's not the same part number. This is no different, that slide is a different part number than the slide that's being put in, plain and simple. I think it's a gray area and I think it's an area that I don't disagree with you, Luke, I think that money could come out of that park dedication fund. I do not wanna be the one that's gonna get shot in the foot if it doesn't work, but I still agree with the mayor, I think we should look into it a little further.
I think the whole thing is B S, so, I mean, it's a city.
Well, there's, there's guidelines we have to follow.
And I think, I think that they, I think you make a good point there, that it's not the same item number, it's not, it isn't the same. It's not like we went and got the same exact slide and put it in place, right? So um, yeah, I mean, I think uh the argument could be made there for sure and I, and I think that they leave that language pretty vague, almost intentionally.
Right.
It can be used for more than what they're implying, so.
So in the future, maybe we should, if, if he says it's okay, that way maybe we should look for slightly different part numbers on everything, because.
There you go, yeah, that's true, yeah.
I mean, we have this money.
I mean, I can understand the repair portion of it.
Yeah.
But it's not being repaired, it's being replaced.
Mm-hmm.
It's a new item.
So this, this fifteen thousand, that was just for repairs on all the equipment that's there, correct?
Yes.
So could we, oh god, I hate to wait on this because there's complaints on it, but I.
What if you just got rid of every, all the skate structures and scrapped them? Could you buy all new stuff with park dedication funds at that point?
And that was twenty-nine thousand?
I think that would be a council decision, but I would think that, yes.
But we're supposed to be designing this thing for the next fifteen years, you know, which is about the life expectancy.
There's different life expectancies on um concrete versus wood.
Wood, yeah. That, that current stuff's been there for quite a long time.
We have replaced the paneling, I believe, twenty-four years.
Yeah.
That's how long it's been there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that.
I believe the anticipated life expectancy for skate parks was fifteen years when I just recently looked.
But we have been repairing it here and there and.
Yeah, I get that, but.
Well, that twenty-nine, that twenty-nine thousand number is for what the repairs that were scheduled or whatever for next year, I guess, right now, but.
Was that for repairs or for replacement, that was a C I P, that would probably be replacement, wouldn't it?
No, it was repairs.
Repairs, okay, wow.
Cause that's our busiest park.
I don't know how much replacement cost is, but it does get you.
I think before we go any further with that, I think we should look at replacement costs.
I agree.
I, I would like to see a whole redesigned park. Modern and upgraded, I mean, that's an old park, old designs, I mean, when that was built, it was built for skateboards and things that aren't even being used nowadays. Equipment is so much different and, and, and the experience that, that the kids are looking for is a lot different than, than what we have here and we should at least keep ourselves open to looking into something different. If we can use park dedication funds and we wanna use those funds for, for this particular project.
Yeah, and it's right next to the BMX and I'm sorry to say, but the BMX riders are using that thing the most. And it'd be nice to change it up and make it more bike friendly and like you said.
It even has a sign right now, it says no bikes, doesn't it?
I don't think so.
I think.
I think it's very annoying and then.
There are plenty of people who bring scooters and
Oh, yeah.
that's what I see primarily out there, scooters.
Yeah, I don't really see, are there skateboards, absolutely, but I see more BMX bikes and the, even than, um, in my neighborhood, which is a, right across the street in the road, in the Park Brook neighborhood, it's all bikes and scooters, so it'd be nice to kinda cater to that.
It really has changed since, you know, two thousand, there's way more skaters back then, I remember though, yeah, it's like, nah, now it's very.
I propose that we cable this thing until we get some more information or how, if we can use that park dedicated fo, kid money to replace that slide. Cause it is being replaced, I, I look at it as being a replacement, it's not, it's not, it's not a repair.
Yeah, replacement.
And I would like to see, maybe see some numbers on redoing the skateboard park. I, I guess the, you know, the, the dock at River Bluff, I think that we can just move forward with that, that's not an issue.
Both the slide and the dock have been purchased.
Yeah, but we could still see if we can't.
Matter of how we budget for it.
Oh.
General funds for money, I mean, it's, it's inevitable it's gonna happen, but I still think we should be able to try to see if we can't use that money for that. Um, and I would like to see what it would cost to redo Bluebird Park or the skateboard park and see if we can't use park dedicated money. Like you said, it's fifteen-year life expectancy and it's been there for twenty-four years, okay? So it's all lived its life.
Well, for, if we redo it, for sure we can use park dedication money on that.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see how much it's gonna cost, I don't wanna.
I'd like to rebrand it as a.
Two forty-five million dollars.
Well, right.
Let's be realistic on that.
Right.
True. We might as well just start calling it a bike park.
But I, that's what I'd like to see.
So we have a lot more things to still discuss. Um, and just, um, so you're aware, we will ha, be having to, as things are continuing to break in the skate park, start shutting down equipment as it's unsafe, so just so you're aware, um, for safety and liability purposes. Um, okay, so moving on to the yellow tube on the large playground equipment um at Bluebird Park, which is also where the large slide was.
Is that a plastic tube or what is, I'm not familiar, okay.
Yep. Um, there was a large crack in the inside of the tube section, so that has been off limits now, um, since it's been found. Um, we reached out to Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground Re, Recreation um for a quote on the. We reached out to Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground Recreation for a quote on the replacement of the tube section. And luckily tubes are still pretty standard size, so we can get a replacement. And that is one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents.
And how old is that?
That is twenty years old.
Okay.
That's not unrealistic.
No, it's not.
And then the chute slides on Clifford Playground. Clifford Playground was supposed to be, was due for repair replacement in the CIP for twenty-twenty-four. Now it is next year for twenty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. That has been there for over twenty years also. The two small blue chute slides, so both of them have cracks on them that are of concern. We met with their representative. There isn't an option because that playground equipment is like the other stuff, um, outdated, obsolete. And basically talking to the playground guy, he said it's not generally because they're just not making stuff. It's because playground safety standards changed over a twenty-year time span. So they have different requirements that require them to make lips higher or whatever changes, um, and that. So that's why they, why playgrounds become obsolete because requirements change. So we can't get a replacement. So the only replacement would be at like an activity center. So taking the slide completely down, um, so that equipment wouldn't have a slide anymore. So two slides again, so we'll be losing three slides in that park. And we could replace it with an activity board. So just something kids can play with.
I think, I think we could look in, because that's something there that if we replaced the whole thing too, we'd be...
That's definitely park...
Park dedication funds.
So...
I have to agree. It's, when you think about it, safety standards have changed. So now it is a complete different thing. It's not the same. I, I look at it, if I was to sit on a jury and it was to come up to me and say, it's not the same. It's not the same.
If we're replacing everything on these parks, that would definitely be a park dedication use. And it is something that staff would like to have your direction to consider and move forward looking at for all of that equipment, um, since both of the playgrounds, it is our park that is most used. We probably have five to ten field trips there a year, just in our own district. And so right now, it's sad for us to have these kids going there and having half of the equipment unusable.
So you're saying we would have no slide in that park with this? I don't think we should do that. That's...
We would have one, no slide on the Clifford stuff. We'd have one slide.
She's saying if you, if you made the...
Going from four to one.
Cause we can't get the replacement slides, so if we didn't...
Oh.
So, but, but what we're saying is we should just replace the entire structure because it's...
But she said there would be no slides with that new structure.
Oh, there will be.
With a new structure, we could do whatever we wanted.
Yeah, the only way we can repair it is...
Staff is looking for...
And right now, right now, they're using those slides though.
The, the chute slides.
Yeah, so you're just concerned...
Because they're on the edges, but we're ready for those to, I mean... Um, so staff is looking for a direction to see if we can look at other options for this park and replacing that equipment, which would be recommended to use park dedication dollars for.
Absolutely. That's where I'd look at it.
I'd think about expanding it because it is the main park, but there's a lot more people using it now. The neighborhoods are starting to build up around there even more.
Well, we've got a, I mean, how much, how much park dedication money do we have right now on...
We're just getting more and I, I don't know.
Well, what's the, the last number that you know? It's like six, is it six?
Yeah, I believe it's around six.
Yeah, I mean, we've got...
Six hundred thousand.
Jeff, if you're wanting to expand something, switch.
Well, but I mean, we have, we have to spend that money on something park-related, so. And I, and I mean, and we are, we do have more people moving to town and, and people using this stuff. So, and that's what it's for, so.
I was expecting to say no more equipment there.
No, no. You know, I'm against the over-the-top amenities, like the splash pad, but...
Right.
It's a park.
Right.
You need something for the kids to do and this, you know, this...
It is known as a regional park that people come to, to play with their kids on the playground, so...
So it's regionally designated?
No, it's not regionally designated, but people come from all over to go to Bluebird Park, so...
I was gonna say, if it's regionally dedicated, we can get some more state funding.
Well, it is at the end of the trail between here and Cambridge.
All right. I think we ought, I think that's the direction we ought to look at, what it's gonna cost to replace it and, and add on is...
To improve it.
Improve it. Improving the park.
Can we do something besides Clifford's name on that smaller?
Well, we probably won't be able to find Clifford equipment, so.
Hey, Clifford's coming back.
You never know.
That would be cool, yeah.
And then the archery targets, I think, uh, you're buying new targets.
Yes, um, we've had a lot of use of the archery targets, but because that also comes out of the, the budget that we discussed, we will need money to purchase new targets, um, because it's...
I know in the past, we discussed you can change the covers, but is the actual inside of the targets are beat up?
Yeah, with them being outside, like they are, um, seeing the weather as well as just a lot of use. It's, it's, we flip them around as many times as we can and do as much as we can to make them last as long as possible. There's just nothing really we do by them directly.
Eighty-four and one ninety-nine?
No, it's ninety-three and two sixty-nine.
And it's...
Wait, what?
Yeah, it went up.
Where are you looking? Oh.
Yeah.
Recent, okay, gotcha.
And this is a much better deal than if you just buy them from a dealer even. This is direct from the manufacturer, so they do give us, uh, pretty significant...
I'd say, I'd say go ahead and just get the targets. I mean, that thing has been well worth its weight in gold as far as I'm concerned.
Now, is that something that we can use park dedication for because it's something new?
No.
No, it's replacements.
Those are replacements.
Well, what if they're not the same exact model as what we had before, which is what you just said? Okay, all right. I, I think, I think you, you could justify a lot of those arguments, like with that same approach, but...
Just switch the, switch the model number back and forth every year.
I think when you, when you look at, when you look at it being safety standards for the playground equipment, that changes the whole gamut. I mean, let's, let's, let's be honest. Those things have lived their life five, seven, eight years. And they're getting weather beaten. So I, I could see that. The archery targets, it's just getting used. And it, it's two grand, it, it, it ain't the end of the world.
Yeah, that's, that, that does get a lot of use.
And when you, but when you're talking seven, eight thousand dollars just to fix something, that's a little different story.
So from now on, we will have a separate line item in the CIP just for targets. That is what we'll, moving forward, that is our plan. So just an FYI.
And what, how long ago were the other twenty-two?
About a year and a half, I believe, is what they lasted.
Is there a quantity discount if we buy more? Like ten versus five, or is, are we pretty much...
I think this is the bottom that we're gonna get. This is for park and rec programs specifically from the manufacturer, so...
Good pre-buy and skip the inflation.
That's what I'm saying.
I think they're regularly like four hundred, she had said when she was looking, so...
We should take advantage of the deal.
Pretty significant reduction.
Take advantage of the deal and get more while we can.
And then moving to Rum River Meadows, there's a green tube connector, um, on the large playground equipment there that has a crack near the top corner, which is also again from the expansion and contraction. It's right on a screw area that is cracking pretty substantially. Uh, we would have to close that tube here, um, if it's, uh, not replaced. And that replacement cost is estimated to be around twelve hundred. Um, we haven't got a final number on that either, but that is also a heavily used park for that neighborhood. I'm sure Steve can attest to that.
I hear it every day.
It says, it says here twelve hundred to fix. Is that a repair on that or a replacement on the...
That's a, it's just a flat piece. It's in one of the pictures. It's, so you have the tube and then the tube is connected to two flat pieces on, it's one of the flat pieces that's holding the tube up. So it's, um, it's a repair. It's, or well, it's a replacement, but it's just a repair of that tube, I guess. So it's not the whole tube.
And how old is that?
Though, that equipment is a little newer than Bluebird. Yeah, I'd say nineteen years old is my, yeah.
That flies. Okay.
Or fifteen, around, right around, in the teens.
I was gonna say ten to fifteen years, maybe.
So if there's...
It's fifteen to twenty. I do know that, but I would guess, yeah, I know it's more than ten.
And there's two flat sections on there that, or one that needs to be replaced now, but there's two flat sections that hold it to the mount?
Yes.
Is the other section gonna need repair too?
Nope, that one didn't have any issues when we did our park. It's this, it's the side facing the south.
Side, okay.
Yep. Which is where we see most of these things occurring.
I think, I think the Bluebird Park stuff, I think we need to really do a deep dive on that. I think the archery targets, we should just go ahead and get it. I think the Rum River Meadows Park, go ahead and just get it done. But I think we need to do a little more homework on what we can and can't do with that park dedicated money. And I don't disagree with Councilman Holmgren. I think that Bluebird Park was always my standpoint to be our showcase. And I think, like you said, there's getting more and more people over there. That other development gets in, all those people that wanna move over into there. I think we should do, see what we can do. Maybe we can revamp quite a bit of it and get some of these other issues taken care of and part of that revamping.
So should we look into purchasing more archery targets or you guys just want the five or the ten?
The only problem is if they're gonna sit for two years, they're gonna rot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So then it's just throwing money out the window.
That's true. Yeah, good point.
The only other thing you could do is rotate them more, rotate them throughout the month. But is that, you know, is that, is that cost-effective? I think we just get, just get the targets that we need. And, you know, they're making them different. Everything has changes.
Is there options? Are, are these an organic type filling? Do they have synthetic type fillings on these? And then we would, we'd just buy more covers or, I'm not familiar with them?
I don't know that much about these archery targets, so I apologize. Julia did the research on these. They're the ones that we'd, I know when originally done, Jordan did a lot of research on these to make sure that we are getting the best ones that lasted the longest. And he had connect, contacted like Elk River and other large archery ranges that use them. And so that's where we got this, um, discount pricing from and knew to contact the manufacturer and that they were ones that would last, I believe, the longest, so...
All right, thanks.
And I think that archery, that archery range is just getting more and more and more. When it first opened up, I went over and talked to people and there's people coming from all over using it. They love it. Otherwise, they were driving away the hell down to Blaine to go shoot archery outside. And I, there's one, I don't wanna say Shoreview, it's kind of that, kinda in that area. They got an archery range set up in there. I see them out there in the middle of winter using it. It's huge. I never dreamed it would be as popular as it is and it's, Mark, I'm wrong. It was pop, very, it's very popular. And I see more and more people getting involved in the sport because of it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, for sure. Let's see, so we're, I think the consensus up here and you, I think you probably want a motion because we're spending over that line item budget, right? So...
Yes.
But I think the consensus is, and we can get a motion here in a minute, but so Rum River Meadows, move forward, archery targets move forward, the yellow tube move forward, Clifford and the skate park wait on so we can maybe get a budget on total replacement for both of those. And then that would be park dedication money that we would look at with that, so...
Okay.
And then I would think, as soon as we have an idea of what we're gonna do down the road here, we should make sure we get a sign out there at the park saying coming soon or something so they know that we're not just letting this stuff, you know, fall apart and we don't have a plan. That we have a plan, yeah.
I think even possibly, I don't know, with that park being so heavily used, even letting them know we're in the process of making a plan wouldn't be so bad. But just, once we have an idea that we're going to move forward with the plan, that might be the way to...
Yeah, I think as soon as we, as soon as we know, let's try to get some kind of a notice out there so people aren't upset about it, so...
And at least let, uh, the BMX Association know, cause they use, the people that go to the track use that a lot.
Maybe they can raise some money?
Maybe, I was thinking that too. Maybe they would wanna raise some money or, or something for having part of a, a bike thing over there too.
A bike feature, yeah.
Can be brought up to them.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, well, we don't...
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So I have that motion from, uh, Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero.
And I was still was looking into park dedication for the seven thousand dollar replacement, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all coming. And I think that, I think they should get a sign out there, coming soon, repairs or whatever, however. Under construction, repairs coming soon.
Yeah, it would be nice to get a sign out there. I don't think people just see like damaged stuff and they just think we're letting it sit. But just, stuff takes time. I had to tell someone, you know, we're waiting on stuff. Not much we can really do.
We ordered that slide in February and...
It's posted on Facebook when we, so we do have that.
Yep, but it's just important to keep letting people know those types of things when you see questions like that.
Or even just a sign with a QR code, it's for updates on the park, you know? That could go to our Facebook page where we post some of that stuff.
And we have looked at that too for the park, is possibly getting a nice kiosk out there, um, which could potentially be used for park dedication dollars.
Like a sign, you mean?
Yeah. Where you can communicate stuff like that in events that are happening.
Yeah, like an information sign. We have those at the county parks.
Okay. All right, so moving on to K six, resolution to consider approving books presented at the Story Stroll by ECRL. And I, uh, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read these or anything.
The moo one, that, that one...
Did you read it?
I, I, I watched a video on it and the, the only word it says in it is moo.
Yeah.
So I don't know what it, it's...
Well, I told, I told Megan, I said, I was reading this and I said, well, can you, can you get those from the library for me so I can read them? So maybe, now that we know kinda what they'd like to put out, cause I haven't had a chance to read them, so maybe...
No, it's, it's like, the only word in it is moo and you just use different inflection to say the word moo in the, the whole book.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that one then?
No, that, what's the point? I'm not an education expert though, so I don't know, is there some sort of inflection training that's supposed to be going on with? I, to me, it's like, I never read that crap.
It's a fun book for little kids.
It's not an agenda modification book.
Right.
Oh, right.
That's what I'm looking at. So it's, I don't care. It's, it's for younger kids that...
It just seems a little strange, like...
But it's not pushing a certain agenda.
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
And that's what I'd be more concerned about anything.
True.
Right.
I don't know what the other one is, so...
The other one was fine. The other one was a regular kids' book.
You read it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Do you understand it?
I have read both.
I'm sorry, I couldn't help that one.
That was a good one.
I couldn't pass that one.
That was great.
That's okay, I can read, so...
All right, well, then that sounds like, uh, maybe somebody wants to make a motion on that.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye, moo.
All right, that motion carries four to one. Uh, moving on to K seven, resolution to consider approving expenditure from the twenty twenty-four budget for the city G I S.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so the city's G I S has been hosted by Bolton and Mink, uh, they've been our, basically a third party, um, hosting of our Esri G I S system, um, and because of the agreement in terms of Esri, uh, they are no longer going to be able to host our G I S, therefore, we're gonna need to take G I S in-house. The benefits of doing so is when we have a staff person who's able to use our G I S, we can make some of our maps internally, we have, um, savings of a cost there as well as turnaround time, which we currently have, uh, Jordan Curtis, who is able to use that program, which is phenomenal. Uh, we don't always have a staff person in-house who can use that, which is why it has been preferred to be contracted with Bolton Mink. But Bolton Mink will still be able to, be able to use the G I S, um, it just will be with the cities, um, and migrate all the information to us, so the shape files and all the graphics and everything that go with that. But there does come a cost with having them migrate all that data to us for the G I S in-house. Um, those costs have been outlined in the, outlined in the proposal that you see, um, in your packet from, from Mr. Cook here, he can explain a little bit more if you have in-depth questions. The cost for migration is not to exceed ninety-four hundred dollars, the cut, the timeline is approximately three months or so. Um, we do, staff evaluated all the engineering contracting lines that we have amongst departments that would use it, and we do feel like we have the, we do know that we have the funds to cover that, just given expenses that we know are coming this year and lack thereof. So funds will come from parks, streets, storm, water, sewer, and planning and zoning engineering line item to cover the cost of this.
I just wanna say I am not a fan of this. Um, our, our family has suffered as a result of poor G I S, um, plotting. Uh, we didn't have sewer for three months back about ten years ago, because the city didn't actually plot our, uh, sewer hookups correctly in two thousand and four when they did our road infrastructure. Um, when you have somebody that's not an engineer trying to plot and do these things, I think it's a horrible idea. Um, I am kind of irritated that this company is getting greedy and trying to, or whatever's going on with this company, and I, I will, won't approve that somebody that, uh, that's not an engineer can add to this or change things on it, because that's just a huge liability for the city, I mean, the city's lucky they didn't get sued by us back then.
The city has not had their own R G I, G I S capabilities.
Yes, well, yeah, but you're still having, you have the, you have the risk of someone here that's not an engineer making changes on a G I S software that's heavily important for our structure, so I would, I, I, I don't want this in-house personally. It's a big risk for us, I mean, you're talking about getting sued, that's.
Yeah, I guess just to, uh, to relay, part of what we will need to set up for this adjustment is an editable account, um, and you can choose to have as many editable accounts as you want. Um, you just, I mean, there are annual fees that you'd pay to Esri to do that, but if that's a specific concern, you could make one account that's only editable for sanitary sewer items. And then only those people would be able to make edits that are relevant. Um, right now, this proposal is just set up one account that would just have access to be able to edit any of the editable fields that we already make available, and then anybody would be able to log in and do that, which maybe, you know, falls into that category you're referring to, where somebody could screw something up. Um, there is a, a second one that automatically goes with this setup, and that is the uneditable option, um, at which point that one would be the one you could make available to most people, and so they can't get at it and screw it up. Um, the other benefit of this switch for the city is Bolton and Mink would still be able to do all of what we currently do, it's just Esri is restricting the licensing, so we can't.
So it just costs us more money, yeah, just costs us more money.
It does.
Yeah.
You have to now have an annual fee.
Of course.
Whereas we were doing it for free for you guys hosting it, now we just can't be the ones like giving you a password to get in, is the thing they're trying to get, but the benefit really is gonna turn out to be you have access for a, a staff person to be able to make maps and not pay us to do those, you know?
But then you have to depend on that person to be right, which on our street in two thousand and four, it was not right, so now we had to dig under the street to find our sewer hookup in the middle of winter, so that's.
In your two thousand and four topic, you're talking in Isani?
In Isani, yeah.
So we.
That wa, that wasn't you guys.
No, I, I don't think you guys had G I S in Isani until we came and started hosting, like.
Well, that could be G I S, electronic, paper, whatever, either way, it's still human error.
So I don't, yeah, so moving forward though, Bolton and Mink will still have the exact same access and the same control over it, or, you know, uploading new pipes, you know, all the stuff that we currently do. But you guys will have the ability to have extra accounts to be able to have different people reduce your guys' costs to paying Bolton and Mink to do what we do. So in the end, you know, it's about, I think, the minimum number of accounts is like a twelve hundred dollar a year kind of a setup. Um, right now, you guys actually already have the seven hundred and sixty-five dollar account, so that you can use our GPS unit and things, so this migration, once it's done, is technically only adding like five hundred dollars a year. And so if you guys make a couple maps, you know, even if they're not like technical maps, but just things that different departments might want, you might come out ahead on how much you would have been spending each year, once this happens. Um, but, you know, it's a totally legit point, and my G I S staff specifically mentioned that idea that right now we're listing that as field worker, and it's just, everybody can get at it and everybody can mess with it, but each one of those accounts is currently three hundred and eighty-five dollars a year. So it just depends on how many accounts you wanna be able to make to restrict who can mess with what, but you really can have as many as you want.
Is there any?
This also is gonna give you guys the ability to do an outward facing one for like, to have on your, like, website, so residents would be able to get at a little bit more, you know, whatever we choose to make available, but non-editable, but at least things they could see. I believe, actually, I think.
We had talked about that, yeah.
Asking for it a little while.
It was, yeah.
And while the way it currently is hosted, we, we just can't make that a thing for you guys, whereas once this happens, you will have that option at least.
Okay.
Why does it cost so much to, to migrate the data?
Agreed.
Well, it's, it's a lot of data, um, and then it's the setting up these different accounts and recreating all these editable fields and keeping all those shape files in the right places and going into the right things to make these accounts set up. Um, you know, I admit it's, you know, even this letter is from my G I S, you know, lead, you know, head person that they've been doing them. We have only a, less than two years now before Esri is really gonna crank down on this, so like, we have a variety of cities that have been doing it, so they have, they have the system down and it, honestly, I don't exactly know why it's as costly as.
Cause you think it's like, okay, well, we, we, and it's all online, right, it's all in like a.
In the end, it will be, yeah.
Right, so I mean, you think you just get in, pay for the program, and cut, you know, yeah, right, exactly, download the data and.
So you're saying.
Open it up on our new site, right?
So we could, we could put this off until next year?
You can, it's just, if you don't do it now, which you don't have to, um, it was primarily, it's gonna have to happen. You currently have a staff member that can do R G I S work, and they physically can't access it right now. And so doing it now just gets them the access, and if you don't do it now and you budget for next year, you, you budget for next year and they don't get access to R G I S.
But then we gotta call and get the information that we need if we don't have access to it, and that costs money, I would assume too, right, so, or.
We're currently doing what we're currently doing.
Yeah.
But data migration might become cheaper too, if you guys already have done it so many times, I mean.
We've already done it quite a bit.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see how it would cost that much, yes.
And this is a not to exceed, so, you know, they usually do build in, you know, the, the risk of, you know, complications, converting, you know, shape file names, some errors, you know, taking care of that, so it's not extra cost for you guys, but certainly could turn out to be, you know, less than this number, but we're just, I'm trying to give you guys the right, what it could be, and, and the fact that you guys budget engineering services in your different departments, and honestly, we don't use it very much. And so the available funds are there to do engineering services, and this is, you know, more or less an engineering service, it's just.
I just look at, I look at it as saying it's, yeah, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's probably the cheapest venture that we're gonna end up doing. It could cost us a lot more than that.
But it's risky for us too, because you have someone that's not an engineer changing stuff.
He's the engineer that would be doing the changing, you can set it up so only they can change it.
We can create layers that they cannot, I mean, I mean, there's shape files, I mean, we have maybe forty-some different layers. We can lock some of them, they don't have to have access to be able to change everything and disturb something, but there are separate layers that you can have the editable fields, so you can do something if you're looking, trying to make an, um, like a stormwater flow or something like that map, you could without changing the true stormwater map layer. So we would have, we would have some that, what you're talking about, like that critical infrastructure and the, what we don't wanna change, we can make sure that people can't edit those, if that's what we're looking to do.
How often is this system backed up and let's say a scenario happened where a lot of changes got made that should have never been made, and it wasn't discovered for a month out. Um, is this, are all the changes, or is the whole system backed up at any given time?
Like for reversion, like to go back?
Right, versions, or, yeah, or can you go back? Currently, we, uh, you know, we have multiple different servers that are constantly backing up all of our data that we host, so. Yes, we have ways to recover pretty much, you know, most anything that's been generated or changed, you know, just in our Bolton and Mink system. Um, the cloud, you know, will be, I guess I honestly don't know exactly how their backup system is, but the benefit of the cloud is it's able to be filed and saved somewhere, you know, in that whole, you know, virtual network of, of servers wherever they are, but, uh, you know, I guess I don't know the specific answer on, once it's on this online R G I S, you know, what that backup process is. I mean, I could ask my G I S guys, but.
It's probably just a version history that you've got a whole, you know, every time you clock, you went in and made a change, it probably saves a new version, right, so.
Yeah, that's currently how we're doing it, but.
I guess for me, it just, it just scares me, I think, I mean, we, as a council, couldn't get access to this to even look at the stuff, but now you're telling the city staff or whoever ends up getting it that they can change all of it, so what if there's.
But it was done because they wouldn't allow us to, because it's not our program, it's somebody else's.
I understand.
That's why you couldn't get into it, that is why. And you're not asking somebody in staff to change anything, they can do the work that they don't need to make changes, they could do the work, so he doesn't have to do some of that work.
But I'm thinking like devil's advocate side, what if someone in the city staff became a part of some organization and then went and changed the critical infrastructure in the map, and then when, you, when emergency responders look at this infrastructure, it's not right. You have to think of, you have, you're giving a lot of power to somebody to effectively create a bad situation.
Anybody that knows anything about computers can change a lot of that stuff without you even knowing it.
Maybe, yeah.
Plain and simple.
Is there any checks and balances on this site, so can you look back and see what changes were made in a certain amount of time? I mean, I, I mean, I guess it'd be that same idea of the backups, you, you know, you, I'm sure you'd be able to go see what that last backup had and what the difference is if, you know, to be able to track what changes have happened, you know? It's that same question, I don't know exactly how the online system works, because it's not what I've been having to use, but, um, I'm sure there's tracking of what got changed and who changed it, or at least when it got logged in. Um, and that who versus when is, you know, one of those, how many accounts you end up setting up, because if you either have, here's the password and login for uneditable, you know, and that's the one that most staff maybe only have access to, and none of them will be able to do anything, but the rest, if you only make one editable account, well, you know, you won't really know which one, which person logged in under that account, because they're all using that same account. Um, but if you only make it accessed, accessible by, you know, one person from each department, you know, you at least would have an idea who, who was in there, but.
I mean, that can, what you just said about, you know, somebody nefarious actor is kinda getting in and changing stuff, I mean, that could happen now if, if an employee at, at, uh, Bolton and Mink decided to do that, you know, so I mean, it's not like, it's not like it's not open to that, that type of sabotage now, so. Um, yeah, the only, the only issue I have with it is just the amount of cost, it, it seems really expensive, but, uh, but there's probably a lot more to it that I don't understand, and, and you probably don't know about either, right? So, so that's not, not your area of, of expertise, I'm sure, so. Um, yeah, but other than that, I, I wish it wasn't so expensive, but I think it, uh, it sounds like it'll be a tool that's useful to have and probably will, could potentially save us some money in the long run, kind of, and versus just dealing with it the way it is now, so.
Unless they've got funds, so it's not coming off of the budget.
Right, yeah, we've got the money to, to pay you for it, so.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. Uh, so we have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from myself, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries four to one. Any questions at all on, uh, consent agenda, pretty short? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero, we are adjourned.